Good evening, council members.
Good evening, Mayor. I'd like to introduce Officer Dave Johansson. You join me, please? We are commending four of our employees today for their actions in the field, both in doing what they can to do community caretaking and to take care of our community. So it's a pretty special day, pretty aligned with Thanksgiving, and we're very thankful for our officers and what they do. Officer Dave Johansson, on October 1st, 2020, you were dispatched to a disturbance near Sixth Avenue with Leader Kenny. You arrived and found witnesses yelling and screaming and appeared to be hitting another individual on the ground. The witness yelled for your help, saying her boyfriend was not breathing. The witness advised that the individual had smoked fentanyl, an opioid, and was not breathing. You requested medics to respond, retrieved your Narcan kit, which is an opiate recovery. You were able to locate a slow, a very slow pulse, and noticed he was breathing very shallow. You administered one dose of Narcan to counteract the opiate overdose, and continued to monitor him, waiting for the medics to arrive. You administered a second dose before the medics were able to arrive. Ultimately, the subject survived, and in fact, did so well, she refused to go to the hospital. So your actions definitely saved his life. So you are commended this day for your actions in saving another individual, and the best tradition of the Lacey Police Department. Well done.
Thank you, sir.
Awesome. Calling up Service Navigator Terrence Mitch Mitchell. Go Mitch. Mitch is our service navigator and does a fine job working with homeless outreach, providing services. And we're going to talk about one special day, the life of Mitch. On October 30th, you were contacting an individual who wanted assistance with his debit card. You worked for over an hour on the phone clearing up the issue with the debit card. Then you requested a copy of the owner's identification, and then you went out to look for him, to help him with this issue. You found him sitting at the bus stop over on Galaxy Drive in front of the Goodwill. As you walked up to the man, you could see he was visibly agitated and distraught. During your conversation, the individual spoke of giving up because he felt he had nowhere to go, and nobody was looking out for him, and that's why he had broken his phone. While you continued to talk to him, you talked to him about housing, financial issues, and how he could move forward. You've been talking, you began talking to your fellow officers to request medical support and find him housing, which you found at South Sound Behavioral Hospital. While the individual continued to express his desire to end it all, he started to move his personal belongings to the side. Mitch made a decision to have EMS transport him to South Sound Behavioral Hospital. While they waited, the individual calmed down a little bit and repeatedly asked Mitch, "Do you think me going to the hospital is the right thing to do? Should I trust the doctors at the hospital?" And you were able to convince him and reassure him that it was the right thing to do. The individual was transported to the hospital, and during the intake, the individual spoke how because of Mitch, he was alive today. The man was just moments away from stepping backwards into traffic, trying to end his life. If not for the actions of Mitch and his outreach, that man would not have survived. As of November 20th, that man has been released from the hospital and has found housing in Centralia. This is just one of many success stories that Mitch and our Community Resources Unit are involved in. So outstanding.
Thank you.
Thank you for your effort.
Thank you.
Good work. Calling forward Officer Eric Lieber.
Thank you, sir.
On July 28th, 2020, Lacey units were dispatched to report of mental disturbance in progress. It was reported by the wife that her husband was delusional, was carrying a drill and scaring everyone in the house. While you were en route, you were notified that the individual is now, the individual is now in possession of a bow and arrow, and could be heard saying, "I'm ready for whoever comes. If someone comes and that I don't recognize, they're going to have an arrow in their face." When you arrived, the individual was in his front yard, wearing only his underwear, holding a bow and arrow. You began dialogue with this individual while he was yelling, ranting, and raving. You continued to build rapport with him over the next 20 minutes, and over the entire course of the call, talked to him for over two hours, getting him to put down the weapon and gain compliance. Further, instead of rushing him, you let him on his own terms sit down on the curb, and then talked him into going to the hospital, and no force was ever used. This is in the best tradition of the Lacey Police Department and our philosophy of de-escalation and minimal use of force. You are commended for your actions.
Thank you, sir.
Excellent work.
Thank you.
And finally, I call up Officer Alicia Howard. That's for you. Officer Alicia Howard, two incidents. The first one, this year, June 1st, 2020. Lacey units were dispatched to a disturbance at McDonald's on Pacific Avenue. Reports of a very large man was described as attacking the employees inside McDonald's, throwing them about the inside of the business. Officer Howard and her assisting officers arrived and encountered a very agitated, six-foot-seven, 300-pound African-American man and his mother. The individual was pacing and yelling at the employees and the officers. While waiting for additional units to arrive, Officer Howard was able to have the individual and his mother move to a safe distance away from the store. After additional units arrived, and there was probable cause to arrest the individual, Officer Howard attempted to detain him, and the individual became very agitated, began yelling graciously charged comments at the other officers. The individuals then stated, "I'll run. They won't catch me. I'll hurt them." Officer Howard was able to build a rapport with the individual and de-escalate a very tense and dangerous situation. Ultimately, the suspect told Officer Howard, "I trust you." He accepted her hand, and she was able to escort the suspect to her patrol vehicle and detain him without any use of force. Through her skill and ability, Officer Howard was able to effectively diffuse what could have been a very volatile and violent situation that would have likely required a significant use of force to resolve. If not for effective use of de-escalation techniques, this incident would have ended very differently. That's the first incident. Later on that month, on June 22nd, Officer Howard was working in detail at Long Lake Park. While there, Officer Howard was not only able to ensure the park remained family-friendly and safe for all the park attendees, she also engaged with citizens in a positive way. In a time where all police activity is being highly scrutinized, Officer Howard showed friendly and positive community engagement with parkgoers, making them feel safe at their local park, and add to their enjoyment of their public facility. Officer Howard's actions were noted by the park patrons, who contacted the department about their appreciation for Officer Howard and her friendly and kind demeanor. Officer Howard is commended for her actions to de-escalate a potentially violent encounter, and for her actions later to enhance the safety and enjoyment of Long Lake Park. Both incidents demonstrate Officer Howard's versatility, her professionalism, her caring, and her commitment to excellence. Her actions are exemplary and in the finest tradition of the Lacey Police Department. Well done.
Thank you.
That concludes our commendations. That is just a sampling of the fine work going on at the Lacey Police Department. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Chief. I really appreciate it. I was just actually talking to a member of Lacey Police District 3, and he described a situation just very recently where one of the Lacey Police officers had saved someone through CPR. And he said that if it wasn't for Lacey Police stepping in and doing that, the CPR, that person would have passed away as well. So I'm sure there's more commendations coming for that. And so thank you so much for all you do and for Lacey Police Department, and you definitely give the best example of community police.
Appreciate it. Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, that is also going to be a commendation that's coming down the road. We're just going to get into this batch. Give me two minutes to go downstairs to the next computer so I can start with the next presentation.
Sounds good. So our next presentations can be the Police Department accreditation presentation. And so we'll wait a couple of seconds until the chief can go downstairs and log back in so we can hear that presentation.
Mr. Mayor, I don't think we can manage an elbow or fist bump, but perhaps we could, we could offer the chief and our officers here of council high five?
Yes.
The presentation? You guys up for that?
For sure.
And Mayor, I will mention that I went on the tour of Department Ecology in St. Martins with Mitch and the officers there, and the challenging, the challenges that they face trying to help that segment of the population. And the only thing I could say is they handle it with dignity and respect for everybody concerned. And like I said, by far, challenges we can't even imagine that they're helping people through, so.
Thank you for that. I'll turn it back over to Chief.
Thanks. Better run back downstairs to the next computer. All right. I'll share my screen here. Let's see. Can I get permission to share my screen?
Can we make sure he's a host so he can share a screen? Yeah, you're not a host yet. Can we, uh... When I make him a host?
He should be able to. Is it not allowing you?
Yeah, there's no button down below. Let's see here.
I don't see him as a host on the participant screen yet.
Oh, something just popped up. Right. All right, John. Let's see here.
There you go.
Oh, there I am. Thank you.
Thanks, John.
All righty. All right. Again, good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and members of City Council, and to our Lacey Public. Today, we'll be talking about police accreditation, and I will promise not to make it too laborious. But it's important, and it's a significant accomplishment for the Police Department. So our agenda really quickly is, we're going to talk about what accreditation is for the Police Department, why it's important, the revised Code of Washington based accreditation standards, best practices based accreditation standards, some of the numbers in the state of Washington, what it means locally here in Thurston County, and also talking how this is an ongoing continual process of improving over time and increasing standards. So basically, police accreditation is sought through the Washington Association of Chiefs, of sheriffs and police chiefs, and is recognized as the parent organization and the professional organization for the state of Washington, which truly sets the standard for the industry and identifies best practices to show that agencies are following best practices to be truly progressive and contemporary law enforcement agencies. It's a, so each police department that gets accredited, it shows a demonstration to that commitment to excellence. As you saw earlier in the program, just some demonstrations of officers doing individual acts to show that excellence in process. Police accreditation is a demonstration for departments committed to progressive and contemporary law enforcement into making sure that we conduct our best practices and ideals. So what is police accreditation? It's a lot. There's 132 accreditation standards grouped under 18 broad categories. I won't go through them all, but they cover such things as use of force, management of the organization, records management, how we handle our information, how we do unusual occurrences, patrol functions, investigative functions, property control, evidence control, even how we manage our assets, our fleet assets, and our property and our equipment. And you got me every single one of those standards, by the way. So a couple of examples. So for example, our policies had to be compliant with the best practices pursuit policy. Have to be at least that standard or stricter, which we are. Additionally, how we investigate and report our use of force, and who reviews that use of force, and to make sure there's accountability and review so that we're held accountable for our actions. We meet those standards, of course. So in the state of Washington, there's approximately 260 law enforcement agencies. Of that, only 59 are accredited, roughly 28%. It puts your police department in a, in pretty, pretty good standing and kind of a rarity. This is a special thing, that your standard, that your police department meets all these standards. A lot of agencies go out for accreditation, not all of them meet the standards. Here in Thurston County, don't mean to boast, but we're the only one. You've got approximately eight other agencies in this county, but it's the Lacey Police Department that's able, consistently able to be accredited. So for all those standards, you have to meet that standard every year of the four-year accreditation cycle to be re-accredited. This is much more difficult than initially being credited just the first year, because you only got to meet it once the first year. Re-accreditation means you got to do it every single year. We have been accredited since 1996 every single year. That's how important it is to us, to make sure that we're being the best of the best in our commitment to excellence. So how do we do that? Well, I got to tell you, I have some gifted people that work for me, work with me. One of these folks is Commander Upton. He's our accreditation manager. In 2008, 12, 16, and 20, he serves as the vice chair for the Washington Accreditation Commission. He's very committed to this effort. He has been an inspector on 23 other outside agencies, and he's worked as a mentor for 14 other agencies to make sure they gain this standard. It's pretty impressive, and it's quite a commitment of his time. And what's known as a clean review is a rare thing, but we achieved a clean review. We had no, it's like an audit, we had no findings, all of our stuff, we met every single standard completely cleanly. All of our stuff, we met every single standard completely cleanly. So, pretty impressive. So with that, that rests up our presentation. I'm very pleased that we've been re-accredited and very proud of our agency. And there's a strong affection for the community for its police department and I think there's a good reason for it. We engage in community caretaking and we follow best standards. So, thank you. If there's any questions that you have to answer. Let me stop sharing my screen.
If you stop sharing your screen, that'd be great. Do you have any questions, Deputy Mayor?
So is it harder now that it's, we're in the middle of a pandemic and having to deal a lot with more virtual types of things and then when you go out, you have other things to deal with?
The short answer is yes. Everything is more difficult during a time of pandemic. I have to make sure that the officers are safe and that we're still engaging in impactful policing, responding to calls for and requests for service and for assistance, that we don't let crime trends go unaddressed, and that we still engage in our community caretaking. Truly, more than half of what we do is community caretaking, outreach to the homeless, making sure folks that are in distress are helped. All the kind of things that kind of fall through the cracks that aren't crimes, we respond to and we assist with.
Yeah, I could imagine, so thank you.
My pleasure.
Thanks. Is there any other questions? Appreciate it, Chief. Keep up the great work. I'm very proud of you.
Very good. Thank you so much.
Are we going to do this?
Yes.
Oh, right. We're going to do that. There's a high, virtual high five to everyone on the police side.
Well, thank you so much.
Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
So next on our agenda is a public comment on items not on the agenda. We actually, we've had quite a few people sign up today. Looks like they're all from the Thurston Climate.
Did you drop off, Andy?
I think we lost the mayor.
There he is. You're muted.
Oh, jeez. Okay, well, I think I'm back here. So what I was saying is we have, we've had 13 people sign up for public comment. Looks like it's all from the Thurston Climate Mitigation Plan. Wayne Olson and one other individual has signed up, but also did public, written public comment, so on the same items. So I think unless there's something new there, we don't have to go through that again. What I'm hoping is, is that we can go through and if there's any new information, be happy to take that public comment, but if we're having people saying the same thing over and over again, that we can hopefully get, you know, get through this. Otherwise, it's, we're going to be here for quite a long time. And so what we'll start with is Phoebe from the Thurston, talking about the Thurston Climate Mitigation Plan. Is Phoebe here? Great. And you can unmute yourself and keep your comments about three minutes. You can also start your video if you like.
Thank you so much. Hello, my name is Phoebe Chartok. I use she/her pronouns and I'm a senior. Thank you so much for listening to our words today. Like my peers, I am here to strongly urge you to vote to pass the Thurston Climate Mitigation Plan. I've lived my entire life in the Pacific Northwest, a place of some of the most intense natural beauty I've ever viewed. In the Pacific Northwest and along down the coast, we've become wildly desensitized to wildfires. I remember thinking at an age as young as six about fire season in the summer. By no intent of our own, we normalized them for ourselves. And when our city, state, and beyond was cloaked in thick smoke for those few weeks in September, I think many of us faced for the first time the realization that this is not normal. And by not normal, I mean something we should never have had to grown accustomed to, something that should be dealt with effectively, something that cannot continue to go ignored by those who have the power and the ability to implement legislation that protects the only planet that we have. The amount of times I've heard the phrase "facts don't care about your feelings" recently is high, so let's talk for a second about facts. Let's talk about the state our country is in as leaders refuse to acknowledge the reality of the crisis situation the COVID-19 pandemic has placed us in. We have seen firsthand the catastrophe that results when we avoid crisis situations using the economy as a scapegoat for avoiding addressing the issue and more pointedly when we ignore science. The two situations are entirely connected and scientists understand that as climate change progresses and we continue to blatantly ignore the gravity of the situation, it will bring around more pandemics, more prices and cost and detriment that low-income families and those in the lower class will shoulder the burden of as governments, local and federal, continue to ignore their and our populations' needs. This is not a question of whether or not you believe in climate change. One look into an environmental science textbook will tell you all the simple scientific data you need to know to understand the reality. It's a question of what comes next, if we will understand the crucial and time-sensitive nature of this issue and vote for progress and for healing. We do not get to treat this as a financial risk or something that we're unwilling to do for monetary reasons. We have one planet and we're running out of chances to get this right. And we cannot continue to ignore the consequences of our unsustainable path and actions. We need to vote for, pass, and implement sustainable and environmentally friendly legislation, which is why I encourage you with all of myself to vote to pass the Thurston Climate Mitigation Plan, because change starts on a local level. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Phoebe. Next up is Ryan. You have more to add? Please keep your comments about three minutes.
Hello, everyone. My name is Ryan Cap Sandy. I'm a junior and I use he/him pronouns. Today, Your Honor, I'd like to ask you to approve the Thurston Climate Mitigation Plan. It can be difficult sometimes to view climate change as the existential threat that it is, because climate change in the future isn't something that we can directly see. So let's look at what it's already done. Fires in California, Oregon, and even here in Washington, hurricanes in Florida, hurricanes and immense flooding in Cambodia, unusually and concerningly high temperatures in some parts of the US last month. For me personally, I've had several activities been canceled that could have potentially gotten me into college and the list could go on for hours. But the Thurston Climate Mitigation Plan could help end all of this. Nobody can say that it'll be cheap, but if we don't start changing now, all of our futures are at stake, so approve these changes for yourselves too. It's been said that ending climate change would cost less than fighting COVID-19 and despite current thoughts, the continuation of climate change will create far more economic disturbance than ending it. Climate change will affect everybody and even though communities of minorities have been systemically placed where there are fewer resources for cleaner air and healthier lifestyle, climate change doesn't discriminate against white folk, the rich, or the successful. It will affect everybody. So who do you want to be known for? The council that took brave steps to help us save, help save us from an uncertain future? Or the council that risked the futures of their subjects to save money? Please approve the Climate Mitigation Plan for everyone. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ryan, and thank you for your passion. And next up is Kaylee. You're on and ready to go.
All right.
Please keep your comments about three minutes.
All right, sounds good. Good evening, council members. My name is Kaylee Shen. I use she/her pronouns and I'm currently a senior. I'd like to begin by thanking the mayor for supporting climate action. We really appreciate your consideration of our constituents and the sustainable future of our city. We're here today to ask you to give your full support to the Thurston Climate Mitigation Plan. And the most important change, as many people have said already, begins at the local level and we need your support to successfully pass and implement this mitigation plan, which we are long overdue for, especially in such a progressive place like Thurston County. With strengthening forest fires in the country and indeed across the world, we need our leaders more than ever to take legitimate steps to address climate change. But the one thing that I'd like you to consider in determining your stance on the Thurston Climate Mitigation Plan is that you do not merely focus on the argument of doing this for future generations, because climate change is here right now and to think of it as a problem that we are altruistically trying to solve for future generations is misleading and euphemizing. To think of climate change as a problem that only harms the polar bears or a problem that only harms our grandchildren or as a problem that mostly affects developing nations and impoverished communities is the wrong way to approach this, because when we think about climate action as something that is merely for future generations, something that can be set aside and eased into slowly, that is when we will fail. And that is the mindset that will lead us as a city, as a nation, and as a species to sit by in apathy as we watch the destabilization and downfall of our society. As Greta Thunberg so famously said, "I want you to panic." Climate action shouldn't be characterized as an altruistic endeavor for it to be seen as a legitimate issue, because we're in this fight for us and the people of today. Because the thing is, we're at the point where I don't even need to point out the facts and statistics about the impact of climate change, because if you just looked at the fires that happened a couple of months ago, you can see how an economy can't run when a planet's on fire, an economy can't run when the smoke's stopping people from leaving their houses, and an economy can't run when housing instability and the fear of climate disasters plague your constituents. You can search for yourself the economic impacts of climate change, because the numbers are right there. And the thing is, we're not, we're not a bunch of kids who are recklessly demanding pie in the sky perfection. We're just asking you to look at the facts, plain and simple, because the thing is, we're moving towards a clean energy future, no matter what. That's just the way society is headed. And we can either stall and spend even more money turning our community around later or do it now while the costs are lower. So with that, I hope that you remember this when you vote to pass the Climate Mitigation Plan. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much. Next up, I think we have Joseph. Feel free to unmute yourself and you can start your video if you like as well, Joseph. So unmute.
Okay, there you go. Okay, great. Well, I'm here.
Please keep your comments about three minutes.
Okay. My name is Joseph Hiss and I'm a retired biologist from the US Fish and Wildlife Service. So I worked in Lacey for quite a few years. I wanted to talk about, again, the Climate Mitigation Plan, which is really foremost to my mind as far as what the city, what all the cities and the county ought to be doing right now. I hope that you can adopt it as it is, because every element in there, all some 70 of the elements are worthwhile. I wanted to focus on two things. One, trees, because they are sequesterers of carbon, and two, on transportation, because that's the largest statewide source of pollution in Washington. So regarding the trees, I think you've so far done a good job in getting public comment with your 2016 plan. However, there's a bit of tweaking that I think could still be done to it. For one thing, I think you could give preference to mature trees. The reason being that they are the best at sequestering carbon. So to do this, I would say, yes, continue on with what your forestry plan says, but give preference to mature trees since they're the best at sequestering carbon. And you can incorporate this kind of language into chapters one, two, three, four, and five of that plan. I think that the only other details that I would give to that plan are, if tree removal has to be done, I suggest only go to that extreme if you have carefully looked at the possibility of leaving some trees on the site. And I especially wondered, I didn't see this anywhere in the plan, what if you could somehow adjust the lot sizes to kind of go around existing trees so that you wouldn't have to have the uniform square lots? Perhaps that's part of a solution. I don't know. And land clearing, same thing, you know? Try to save all the mature trees you possibly can, because they're going to be so valuable to us in the future. Regarding transportation, I think that allowing flexible work schedules is very important, because we had those at the office that I used to work with at US Fish and Wildlife and I was really glad we did, because we didn't have a lot of the congestion problems that I see around my house where the natural resources building all seems to let out at the same time and boy, they have a real traffic jam there. I would encourage, if you're going to improve the road network, look at the suitability for buses and bicycles first. And also, think maybe in 10 years, we won't be driving as much as we do today for one reason or another. So you might not need to fix the roads to a certain capacity now, knowing that some years from now, you'll be doing less of that sort of thing. I think that
You're approaching, you're approaching your time limit here, Joseph. I appreciate your testimony.
Okay. I don't know if Elian Wilson is here tonight, but if she is, she has some points to make too on the same topic. So thank you very much for your time and hope that you do vote for this plan.
Yeah, we're very proud that we've been a tree city, one of the first cities as a tree city USA and we have a, I think we have a pretty great tree protection program, but you know, we'll continue to look at it. So thank you so much for that.
All righty.
So next up is Luisa. Is she here? Your testimony? There you go.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can hear you and please state your name and keep your comments about three minutes.
Okay. My name is Luisa Sevier. I am a 17-year-old high school senior. And I did have a prepared speech that I was going to use, but a lot of my friends have been saying the things that I wanted to say, pointing out how it's important that we act now on climate change, because if we don't, it will be too late. And I don't want to bore you by saying the same thing over and over again, because undoubtedly you've heard it a million times before. I just wanted to point out how insane it is that children, we are all younger than 18, we are begging adults to care about our futures and our lives. And that is absurd. And I get it that, you know, you do need to weigh the economic cost and benefit of certain actions that we can take to address climate change. But you need to understand that this is not just an issue of numbers and money and resources. You are making decisions that will impact not just the lives of future generations, but also impact the lives of my generation, people who are alive today. For example, I have asthma and I normally have it really well controlled, but during the summers, as wildfires have become more common and smoke is more common, even stepping out the door is a risk for me. And normally, my rescue inhaler, you know, just lies at the bottom of my backpack, unused, forgotten, not even thought about. But during the summer, it is my constant companion because of smoke from wildfires that impacts my ability to do something as simple as breathing. The most dangerous misconception that people have about climate change is that it is not affecting humans yet or that it is not affecting people in the industrialized world. They think that it's only impacting people in poor, undeveloped countries that don't have the resources to help their citizens. Well, guess what? It's already impacting us in the developed world. It is already killing US citizens. And we need action to be taken on this now, because if we don't do this, it will be too late. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much and appreciate your passion and thank you for your testimony today. Next up, we have Bahar. There you go. And unmute yourself and please keep your comments to about three minutes there.
Okay. Good evening, council members. My name is
Okay. Um, good evening, council members. My name is Bahar Puzajamehri. I use she/her pronouns and I'm a senior. I want you to imagine the year is 2050. Because of the price for action, no effort was made to reduce carbon emissions. So the Earth's average temperature has increased two degrees Celsius, or thirty-five point six degrees Fahrenheit from the pre-industrial age. And we're on track to hit three degrees Celsius by 2100. When you step outside your house, the first thing you notice is the air. It feels heavy, congested with particulate pollution. Every breath results in a cough and your eyes are incessantly watering. You can no longer simply go out for a breath of fresh air and masks have become a permanent necessity. Playgrounds are deserted as parents don't let their kids play outside anymore since premature deaths due to asthma and other breathing problems have skyrocketed. Anyone who does go out has to lather on a thick layer of sunscreen because the depleted ozone layer has caused strength in UV rays, resulting in a ten percent increase in cases of skin cancer. While summer break used to be the best time in a kid's life, temperatures of over one hundred ten degrees have become the new normal. So everyone is forced to stay indoors, glued to the air conditioner if they can afford one, in order to avoid heat stroke. Grocery stores become more and more bare every day. There are empty shelves where there used to be fresh fruit. The seafood section, it's practically gone. Ocean acidification has decimated marine life. Across the world, wildfires, flooding, ferocious hurricanes, and intolerable temperatures have caused mass migration as people flee their homes in search of refuge. There's a humanitarian crisis, the likes of which we have never experienced before. People no longer have hope. All that is left is an unbearable sense of loss for how things used to be and resentment at those who sat idle all those decades ago. The future that scientists of NASA, the World Wildlife Fund, the UN's Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change, and others have predicted. We only have seven years left to prevent this grim dystopia. So what matters more, money or the future of humanity? By passing the Thurston Climate Mitigation Plan, the city of Lacey will be aligning themselves with the right side of history. It will take the necessary action we desperately need to reduce our emissions in order to stop the climate crisis from escalating further so that when we do reach 2050, we can look back and know we did everything in our power to preserve our planet, our only home. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much. Um, and our next, um, person up is Maggie. Please introduce yourself and keep your comments about three minutes.
Okay. Um, good evening. My name is Maggie Kins and I use she/her pronouns. I'm a junior and a member of my school's Climate Action Club. I am also here today to support the Climate Mitigation Plan. And I think my peers' speeches have been super powerful. So this is just one way to look at why we should care about something this important. So I have a very deep respect for the place that we live in, the people and the land. And the older I get, the more I realize how special Western Washington is. And, um, because we just have so many beautiful places, from the sound to the mountains, to the forests, to the ocean. And they all still contain thriving ecosystems and biodiversity that can be hard to come by in other parts of the world. And I don't think people here realize how special it is and how many beautiful places we have so near to us. And this is why I think climate change is so important for us to realize that we need to address it here in Thurston County. How could we not take action when we live in a place surrounded by the significance of nature? If we don't respect this power that's around us and listen to science, we face serious consequences. And there shouldn't be no choice to this because if we don't make significant carbon reductions by 2050, our average August high temperatures will increase by six and a half degrees and the Niskoali Stream flow will be reduced by twenty-seven percent, which will cause droughts, water shortages, wildfires, and livestock and crop losses. And on a more national scale, um, it can take away ten and a half percent of the US's GDP by 2100 if we don't do something now. And ecosystems will face problems that will affect and have been affecting us, like people have mentioned. And threaten our clean air, clean water, and clean food. Why is this still a partisan issue when scientists keep repeating the same warnings? How could politics have anything to do with wanting an optimistic future? We're talking about people's health and livelihood. How can a politician disregard climate action and pretend to care about a citizen's well-being? This is why we need the Thurston Climate Mitigation Plan, because it's about health, it's about the economy, it's about making the right choices. And most importantly, it's about protecting and listening to this beautiful place we live in for its sake and most importantly, for ours. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Let's see. Next on the list is, uh, it's like it's Leila.
Good evening. My name is Leila Markland. I use she/her pronouns and I'm currently a junior at Ruwrich High School. My previous.
In part of our youth council as well.
My peers and previous presenters have touched on most of the points in my speech pretty beautifully and powerfully. So I would like to just keep it short and recite the end of my speech. You have the chance, in a small but grand way, all the same, to help save the world. It all starts with choosing to implement this plan. Everyone deserves a chance to make choices, but by downplaying how powerful climate change really is and by choosing not to take action for our future, you have decided that everyone, not everyone, will get a chance to make a choice in how they live or how they live. I choose to believe in humanity and I choose to believe in you. I hope I'm making the right choice. Thank you for your time.
And thank you and thank you for keeping that short. Appreciate it. Um, next up is Simone.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yep, can hear you.
Hi, my name's Simone. I use she/her pronouns. I'm a sophomore in a part of Climate Action Club. I'm here to ask you to pass the Thurston Climate Mitigation Plan. I'm only fifteen years old. Most people at this age would be carefree, feel like they're on top of the world. But if we are living in the middle of a climate crisis, I worry about the health of me, my loved ones, and our planet daily. We have seen the devastating effects of climate change in our own community with the poor air quality from the fires this summer, from the summers in previous years. For the sake of your community and for generations to come, I urge you to pass the Thurston Climate Mitigation Plan. These storms will only, only get worse and more frequent, as the past years have shown. This isn't a coincidence that the fires in Washington are progressively getting worse. This is a trend line. As for the frequency, in fifteen years, I've personally lived through ninety-nine wildfires that have taken place in our state alone. As of November second, 2020, there have been over forty-seven thousand five hundred fires that have burned about eight point six million acres this year in the United States alone. I will give our state this. We have gotten better at protecting our structures and people, but it's easier and more effective to take the bullets out of the gun than building a larger shield. Passing the Thurston Climate Mitigation Plan will save you money. The decreased flooding in our community will save us money. The decreased health conditions will save us money. Passing the plan now will save us money. Over the past three years, the world has spent over six hundred fifty billion dollars on fixing climate-related disasters. That's about two hundred sixteen dol- two hundred sixteen billion dollars a year to fix climate change as a whole. It will require approximately two trillion dollars. This might seem like a scary number at first, but at the rate of this damage control, globally, it will take approximately nine years of the cost of flooding due to climate change to be the same as the cost to fix climate change overall, which is not including the increase of needed damage control over this time. If we continue to ignore the climate crisis, the cost of fixing it will exponentially increase and the increase of damage control will also increase. If you pass this plan now, you will save us money by spending now and not paying when the price tag is much larger. Our county is next to the capital. Lacey is next to the capital. The entire state of Washington and surrounding states are looking at us. We have the responsibility to lead our state and neighboring states as they watch us pass bills and plans to help this dying environment. For the sake of your community, state, nation, and the planet, I urge you to pass the Thurston Climate Mitigation Plan for future generations and the safety and health of the people who are living in Lacey. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And now we're on to, uh, Simone. Wait, unless I'm off, are we on to Gia? Gia, that's right.
Hi, can you guys hear me?
Yep, great.
Good evening, council members. To begin with, my name is Gia Bar and I go by she/her pronouns. I'm an eleventh grade and a member of Climate Action Club. Today, I'm here to ask you all for your help with initiating the Thurston Climate Mitigation Plan. As high schoolers, there is only so much we can do, so we need your help to take the next steps in improving our climate. I wanted to share with all of you the problems we will face in the future due to climate change if nothing is done. Access to food will become limited and food prices would be higher. To take action in the prevention of this danger, scientists and farmers are working together to actively mitigate the effects of climate change. However, they can't pull this on, pull this off on their own. They need our help too. Not just food, but also our air, something we wouldn't normally think twice about living without, suddenly becomes our main priority. Air, enhanceively warmer and polluted. This summer, we couldn't even leave our homes due to wildfires. Fresh air, a dream no longer a reality. Unfortunately, the reality of face masks would become our whole future, rather than just temporary. Our beautiful forest dwindled down to ashes due to wildfires. Rising sea surface temperatures will develop tropical storms and hurricanes. One billion people will be affected by 2100 if nothing is done. A multitude of areas that will be overrun by floods might not be able to obtain the required accommodations like food and water in order to survive. A variety of harmful diseases would become apparent like malaria, cholera, malnutrition, bird flu, tuberculosis, parasites, dengue. Part of the world expected to migrate to higher altitudes due to the rising sea levels alone. The issue with society today is that many people decided to ignore the complications rather than face it head on. Why, you may ask? Well, because it's easier that way. Why should we have to worry about a problem that's barely affecting us? The thing is that people are being directly affected by climate change without making the realization that climate change is the culprit behind it. Everyone needs to work together to make a major change in our climate. By starting off in Thurston County, I strongly believe that we can convince and inspire others to work with us and make a difference in our community. Although it is a small step, we have to start somewhere. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Um, next round to, uh, Emily.
Um, good afternoon, council members. I will, I also had a speech, but I'm gonna give you the highlight because, um, I, my name is Owen Keller. I use she/her pronouns. I am sixteen years old and I, along with my peers, am here to express, to express my support of the Thurston Climate Mitigation Plan. One fact that I discovered while doing a little research is that according to our own Department of Ecology and their climate scientists that we work with, is that the Northwest could expect to lose, probably expect to lose over a million acres each year just to wildfires by the 2040. And that's a lot and that's really scary. Also, another very real effect of climate change that you can already see now in, um, the, if you go to downtown Olympia during the, um, King tide, the water like goes onto the parking lot. It's, it's very scary, but, um, another very real consequence of rising sea levels is that it will affect the wells. Um, I live in unincorporated Thurston County and we have a well to get our water and a lot of people depend on wells and that's something that would be very affected by sea levels and climate change. And there's, there's so much more, but, um, I'll mention it. Another, uh, important point is that it's, it's gonna, we're going to need to, to, um, deal with the effects of climate change. And if we start now, our county can and will become a leader if we can inspire others to work with us against climate change. Thank you. And please, uh, first up is passing the Thurston Climate Mitigation Plan. Thank you so much for your time. I hope you all have a wonderful evening.
Thank you. And, uh, next to last is Alessandro. Now mute yourself and keep your comments about three minutes. We can't hear you for some reason. Hmm, your mic, I don't think your mic's working there, buddy.
Can you hear me now?
Yep.
Go wait for a second. Good evening, everyone. My name is Alessandra Martinez. I'm a high school sophomore and member of Climate Action. According to the International Energy Agency, the gold amount of CO2 emissions in 2019 was thirty-three gigatons. It may not sound impressive, but one gigaton is the equivalent of one million metric tons. And metric ton is equal to ten, one thousand kilograms or twenty-two thousand pounds. So to put that into perspective, in 2019, we globally emitted twenty-six trillion pounds of CO2, which is frankly a sad dream. In Washington State alone, our carbon emissions for 2019 is nearly a hundred million metric tons, something we are part of. It is concerning to say the least, but if we don't take action now, there may not be a safe place fifty, thirty, maybe even twenty years from now for people to call home. Scientists have estimated we can only afford to go two degrees Celsius above the twentieth century average or else the effects we already have and will be causing truly devastating. Currently, as we've already from point one six degrees above that average, at least only a short time left. Choose to, our features will be set. Summer heat waves won't exceed into the triple digits. Droughts will cover all our crops. People won't have to worry about heat stroke and air quality. And billions of dollars will, enjoyable, normal life will last for many generations. If we choose not to, all these bad things will attack, even our county, state, country, and world, a place of misery and a new hardship. And I read each and everyone here to remember, the consequences we can manage have already begun. Hurricanes in Atlantic have reached a record number this year, costing the US, Caribbean, and Central America hundreds of billions of dollars in damage. Wildfires around the globe, even in our own state, have reached record proportions. Warming temperatures in the past years and fostering mosquito-borne diseases, things that have been fixed beyond just COVID-19. Injuries have gone up consistently since previous decades. If people are going thirsty, grab the water they used to get. Sure, we may not all experience each of these problems right now, but one day, people that suffer for their lives will all be us. And people who suffer now will be no more. Would you want to be responsible for that? So please, pass the, pass the Thurston Climate Mitigation. Unmuted away, save our ecosystems, our planet, our future, and ourselves from endless pain and struggle. Thank you for your time and hope you stay well during the ongoing pandemic.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. And that's the, wraps up all, all the students for the Thurston Climate Mitigation Plan. We have Wayne Olson. So we, um, Wayne, you also submitted a written testimony. Do you have anything else you'd like to add to that?
Uh, yes, please. I, I do have it shorter than the normal three minutes, but I do, uh, rather than talk about TCMP, I would like to put the spotlight on you and congratulate you and the city staff for the teamwork over the last many years to reduce carbon emissions from your electricity usage. I think you should be bragging. You're not getting the recognition you deserve about being on the ground floor of Puget Sound Energy's new green direct program, negotiating the contract amendment this month for twenty years of power from the Skookumchuck Wind Farm, now coming online, and from a solar farm in south central Washington, coming online next, next spring. Understand that this contract will meet one hundred percent of the city's municipal electricity requirements. I did send an email to you this morning with additional comments about pricing. I did send an email to you this morning with additional comments about pricing for the contract, but overall believe this is a wise course of action. At your work session in, on this contract last month, you commented that the second phase of PSE's Green Direct Program was fully booked in seventeen minutes, which I believe attests to the hunger of the residents of our state for action to address our impending climate crisis and the requirement to reduce our carbon emissions. So thank you for your trailblazing efforts. So I guess I did talk about TCMP after all, and so this action is one of the pillars of the plan to enable eighty-five percent reduction of Thurston County emissions by 2050. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Wayne. Appreciate it. And that wraps up our, our public comment period. Obviously, a little bit longer today, but we have some passionate young students and people out there. This climate mitigation plan is going to be coming up for a vote here pretty quick, so it's good to hear from the public and their passions on this. So next up on our agenda is a public hearing for the Serenity Carpenter Road Annexation Project. I'm going to switch over to Ryan Andrews and then open up this public hearing. It's Ryan. Here. Don't see him. There he is. Go for it, Ryan.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Give me one second here to share my screen. All right. Good evening again. So tonight, your purpose of this is to conduct a public hearing on the Serenity Carpenter Road Annexation. After the conclusion of the hearing, staff's recommendation is to approve a motion to send the annexation on to the Thurston County Boundary Review Board. So the city has received a petition for annexation for property located off Carpenter Road between Martin Way and Pacific Avenue. Prior to approval of the annexation, state law requires that a public hearing be held by the city council and then sent to the Boundary Review Board for their review after the hearing's been held. A little bit about the property, the area is located east of Carpenter Road in the Tanglewild Thompson Place Planning Area. It contains two parcels located at six twelve and four oh eight Carpenter Road, totaling a little bit more than five acres. The property at six twelve Carpenter Road contains existing single-family residence. At four oh eight Carpenter Road, this contains an existing manufactured home, both of which are accessible off Carpenter Roads. So you can see the properties on the screen there. Here is an aerial photograph. So you can see the, the residence on the north side, on the north parcel. The southern parcel does contain an existing manufactured home, kind of buried in the trees there. The 2021 assessed value of these properties is a little bit more than a million dollars. Here is the zoning of the properties. The northern parcel is zoned mixed-use high-density corridor. Purpose of this zone is to provide for a mix of commercial and residential uses along the Martin Way Corridor. The southern property is zoned a low-density residential, three to six units per acre. Purpose of this is for single-family residential development between three and six units per acre. Upon annexation, these properties do retain this existing zoning. Another thing I wanted to mention is with the, our annexation agreement with Thurston County, we're also required to annex the portion of Carpenter Road that is in this area. The good news with that is that it's been recently redeveloped to full city standards, and so we are not really inheriting any type of liability with the annexation of Carpenter Road in this area. This is a logical extension of our city boundaries and would help square off some irregularities. Couple of things about the utilities that I did want to mention before I turn it back over to you is it is well-served with water. It is in the Lacey Water Service Area with a water line and Carpenter Road. Upon development or redevelopment of these sites, they would have to extend water service to these properties. In addition, sewer, sewer is located at the northwest corner of these, the, the subject annexation area. It would be extended down Carpenter Road and onsite with future development of this area. So again, as I mentioned, the purpose of tonight's meeting is to conduct a public hearing and then take testimony and then forward it on to the Boundary Review Board. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have before opening up the hearing.
The, the hearing's now open. We don't have anyone who's signed up for this public hearing though, but is there any questions from this council? It's been pretty straightforward. Seeing none, then I will close this public hearing on the Serenity Carpenter Road Annexation. Did you, did you need him? And you needed a motion, right, Ryan?
Yeah, correct. We'd prefer to have a motion to send it on to the Boundary Review Board.
I would move, I would move that we forward this annexation on to the Boundary Review Board.
I second it.
Been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
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 Is there anyone opposed? The motion carries and we'll, we'll forward it on to the Boundary Review Board. Thank you, Ryan. Appreciate it. Next up is under resolutions, resolution authorizing the 2021 AdVORM tax increase. Troy, give a quick explanation while we're back here at this point.
I do. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, council. I do want to assure the council that the 2021 property taxes were certified with Thurston County, so we are in compliance with that requirement. When I did certify the property taxes to the county, I was informed that we did not meet the provisions of RCW eighty-four fifty-five one twenty. This particular RCW requires that any property tax increase be adopted by a separate ordinance or resolution and that it include the increase in terms of dollars and percentage. I thought we had met those provisions because we did that within the Declaration of Need Resolution. So we combined two actions, but I was told it does indeed need to be a separate action, so this is really a housekeeping resolution for the council to consider. Again, the property tax has been certified, but we do need to meet the provisions of this particular RCW. I apologize for any confusion this might have caused the council as well as the public. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions and again, looking for an adoption of the resolution.
I would make motion to that we adopt the resolution relating to the 2021 AdVORM tax increase.
I second it.
Been moving second. Is there any discussion? Councilor Greenstein?
I'm just, I'm actually happy to see that this is back on the agenda since I was not at the meeting where it was, where the property tax was voted on, so I'm happy that I will actually get to voice my vote on this.
Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
The motion passes and we will have now that resolution authorizing the 2021 AdVORM tax increase. Thank you, Troy. Next up is the 2021 budget ordinances.
Okay. Thank you again, Mr. Mayor. Congratulations, council and staff. We've made it to the final stage of our 2021 budget process. So for your consideration tonight is the 2021 budget ordinance. I'll say that we believe this budget includes all of the guidance that the council has provided over the last few months in terms of meeting its priorities and obligations to the public. In terms of dollars, the total budget for 2021 is one hundred and sixty-eight million, seven hundred and sixty-two thousand, nine hundred and sixty-three dollars. The general fund budget, which represents the services I believe our citizens most identify with, is fifty-one million, five hundred and ninety-seven, three hundred and forty-two dollars. Both of these represent significant decreases compared to the 2020 amended budget. And as you know, we've discussed the impacts of the one-time financial support that has come through our budget in terms of CARES Act dollars for the support of our citizens and business community. We also have lower one-time capital projects and equipments in this budget. Really due to the uncertain nature of the COVID public health emergency. So in summary, the budget, it does meet the service demands that our citizens have come to expect. I think we've taken strong consideration for the uncertainty of the COVID pandemic. This budget also continues to preserve infrastructure. It continues to invest in city infrastructure. And, and as I stated earlier, I think this does meet the priorities that the council has established. So I, despite the reduction in the budget, I believe this is a budget we should be proud of and does meet the expectations of the citizens. So again, I thank the council for all their guidance. I want to thank city manager, his leadership. And of course, all of the directors and city staff that put in countless hours and presented this budget before you. So obviously, the recommendation is that you adopt the ordinance setting the 2021 budget.
So Troy, real quick, at our last finance committee meeting, there was some discussion about the climate mitigation plan and what that line item is going to be for, for next year. Is that, is that included in this budget proposal?
It is not in this budget, but the council did amend the budget back in September, which included a hundred thousand dollars for climate action. So that, those expenditures are not likely to happen in this calendar year, so those will be carried over into 2021. I'll also point out that the finance committee discussed its reserves and its designations that will be coming before the full council here in, in two weeks. The, the finance committee identified another two hundred thousand dollars to obligate towards climate action. So you'll have a total of three hundred thousand in the budget in 2021, although it's not officially in this budget. There will be three hundred thousand available in total.
Okay, thank you. Is there any other discussion? Can I get a, a motion, please?
I would move adoption of the 2021 budget.
I second it.
It's been moved in the second to adopt this 2021 budget ordinance, setting the total budget amount one hundred and sixty-eight million, seven hundred and sixty-two thousand, nine hundred and sixty-three dollars. The general fund total budget amount of fifty-one million, five hundred and ninety-seven thousand, three hundred and forty-two. All in favor of that motion? Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Is there any opposed? Seeing none, the motion carries and we have a 2021 budget. Thank you, Troy.
Thank you, Troy.
Great, thank you.
So next, under the mayor's report, I have actually three recommendations for a reappointment. And if you don't mind, I would take that all under one motion unless I see an objection. The recommendation would be to reappoint Peg Evans-Browns, Dave Watson, and Mark Manger to the Lacey Plank Commission for a second term. And I have a second.
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 It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion? They've obviously been on the Plank Commission doing some great work and I look forward to them continuing their work on the Plank Commission and thank them for their service. That being said, we have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
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 Is there anyone opposed? That motion will carry and we will reappoint Peg, David, and Mark to the Plank Mission. Thank you, guys. So next up, we have the city manager's report.
Well, Mayor and City Council, you'd asked the Summer Walk Division Five final plat come before as a brief summary. Before that went to final action, as you know, it's the action to approve the final plat. Rick Walks can provide kind of a brief history of that for you and the ability to answer any questions that you may have.
Appreciate it.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council, and thank you for having me here tonight. Yes, the Summer Walk master plan is getting closer and closer to being fully implemented. So we're here tonight to, with the final plat for Division Five, and the request is for the council to adopt a motion approving that final plat. The, the Division Five is approximately forty-two lots out of the total of three hundred and eighty-seven lots that are part of the Summer Walk master plan. And the, this is the last residential phase of the project. The city engineer, Ruggichesal, and myself as a city planner have signed the plat, certified all the conditions of preliminary plat approval have been made. And the, and the plat map is ready for recording to set the property for sale. For a point of reference, I'm going to try and share my screen and bring up the plat map to show those forty-two lots that are being created. Let's see. Does everybody see my screen?
Yep.
Yes.
So this is the, the Division Five. Again, like I said, it's forty-two lots. There is a community tract with a community park tied to it, and it is the, as I said, the last phase. The context of this particular division in the overall master plan, this is an aerial shot taken this last summer of the Summer Walk, the area of Summer Walk Village Center. The Summer Walk property is outlined in red. And Division Five is this area up here that you see where the, the street's been constructed and the site's been graded and ready for individual lot construction. This particular master plan is a total of, of about seventy acres. And again, includes about three hundred and eighty-seven single-family lots and townhouse lots for a total density of about ten point five units to the acre. Being a master plan and, and as a, under the Village Center ordinance, this is a project that has mixed, mixed designations in it. Down at the southern end of the property, next to Yellam Highway, is the commercial portion. And then at the north, up next to Parks, Rainier Vista Park, this, this would be the last phase. That is actually owned by a church that will eventually develop and do some type of church property in semi-public use. The area that I have shaded is the Mountain Greens Mobile Home Park, and the reason why I have shaded is to provide a little bit of history. This particular master plan was approved back in two thousand and four, and the first preliminary plat was approved in two thousand and five, so it's taken quite a bit of time for it to develop out. And the original master plan in, in two thousand and four was the, the final version, gone through a conceptual master plan back in the mid nineties. I think it was approved in nineteen ninety-seven. And I bring that up because that was done when the, all these properties are owned together. And I'll toggle down, just kind of show an image of the old master plan. So again, down to the south is Yellam Highway. It came off of Yellam Highway with a road corridor extending north with this boulevard, very similar to what was built in Ballast Street of Horizon Point. You had your commercial piece and a potential school property. And this area in white was the Mountain Greens Mobile Home Park, and this was all owned by one ownership at that time. Eventually, they came in with a proposal to implement this master plan with actually a, a Super Walmart. At the same time as we, as a Super Walmart was proposed in Galaxy Drive, they looked at amending that master plan to take this about roughly twelve to fifteen acres of commercial, expand it to thirty, to really just change the character of what the intended master plan. That project was ultimately denied. And it was approved with the, well, this is the, the Walmart proposal plan. As you can see, it's an entirely different context with that type of commercial use there. But that project was denied, and then this was the master plan that was ultimately approved. The reason why there's a change in that center corridor from this entrance road without having the, the trails and landscape median in the center of the median was because ultimately when, if that was built, it would actually take, remove a half of Mountain Greens Mobile Home Park. And at that time, under this master plan, the two properties were sold separately. So we had to amend that master plan to provide this corridor, but in, in doing so, we were able to do, meet most of that intent of the original concept that was established in nineteen ninety-seven. So one of those concepts was having some pedestrian connection between the south and the north and ultimately the Rainier Vista Park. And if you look at this aerial, you can see that corridor, open space, transit runs around, Parkside Drive, through the roundabout and across and down and connects into the commercial area. So again, that's part of the tenants of our, our planning efforts and good, good sound planning is to try to create walkable neighborhoods so people can get from either the, the community parks, commercial services, and those type of things without necessarily having to be in a vehicle, they can walk in a safe core. So we're maintaining that intent of the original nineteen ninety-seven plan. Other items, again, as you can tell, this is in the center of a built- Other items, um, again, as you can tell, this is in the center of a built out area with Yellum Highway. And I always looked at the Summer Walk properties kind of being that last piece of the jigsaw puzzle. Because prior to this being developed. Um, to get uh, from College Street over to Roto, you had to go down to uh Yellum Highway. But as you can see, this dubbed into these road extensions that were previously planned based on our transportation plans. And you start seeing these uh, the grid being completed out in this area. So people will have more opportunity to go different directions. And disperse traffic throughout the neighborhood versus being focused just on the arterials. And again, this Parkside Drive corridor is a key connection from Yellum Highway up to. Up to Rainier Vista Park and ultimately Forty Fifth. This is also part of the, of the very beginning south leg of the designated bike corridor. That uh, Scott Agar and his team in Public Works worked on to create a parallel corridor to College Street. As opposed to uh the other side having to go all the way over to Shale's Western Trail. So again, this is a key connection that was created by. The, the finishing of uh the summer master. Another thing I wanted to just kind of highlight of note of this master plan is uh. Um, you know, we talked about, you heard in the public comment section, the, the, they talked about uh, trees and our tree protection. Th- this is a piece too that when this was developed, this was fairly predominantly in open woods, but up in this area of the, of the plan, there was. Or this property, there was uh quite a few different trees. And in trying to figure out how to balance tree protection with trying to create compact neighborhoods and meeting our, our conferency plan. We were able to save some trees in certain portions of the site, but we actually had. Uh, quite a few, I think it was around fifteen to twenty trees that were of, of mature height, twenty feet or so. Transplant from this area up along the corridor in front of this particular portion of the project next to Yellum Highway. And I actually went out there today just to kind of look at those trees. And those are now about fifty feet tall and they're transplanted about ten years ago. So there's another way we work with trying to maintain. Uh, balance between our um, need for housing, need for connectivity, as well as for uh. Now, uh, managing our urban forest and, and, and continuing to expand it and, and protect those trees. So again, this, this, this master plan, the original master plan was conceptual, first approved in nineteen ninety seven. Finally realized and implemented starting in two thousand and four. And we're now down to the last residential phase, division number five to be finalized. The um, um, and again, part of the reason it took so long was, starting in two thousand and five, this also went through the two thousand and eight recession. So the, this particular residential portion of the project was developed by D R Horton. This phase in this area was developed by Patchtree Home and the remaining phases by Summit Homes. And they took, they bought that, those phases right. Around two thousand and eight. And so they were been working through that, uh, the impact of that recession. And now they're, they're able to finish off the project. So with that, uh, just brief history and summary of some mark master plan and the plan around it. And I just request council to approve this uh final platform divided by for record. With Thurston County Auditor's Office. I'll be happy to answer any questions the council may have. And I will stop sharing my screen.
Perfect. Thank you for that recap. Boy, that's uh been a long time coming. And this was obviously one, you know, in this, especially this part of town. Um, uh, one of those plant communities that we've seen sort of, you know, get started and then stop and um, been rolling. This past several years. So it's been just nice to get an update and. On where we've been and where we're, we're at now. This, this, the last of the homes come, coming in. So I thank you for that, Rick.
Yep, I think I have one thing to add to if I can, but when I came to working for the city of Lacey, it was in nineteen ninety nine. This is one of the first projects handed to me. And so I worked on it and then subsequently other staff. But that commercial piece down in the south corner, they only first started out with small scale. Then we had the Walmart proposal, which was out of scale and character of the village center. But since that point, we had several other approvals of commercial from uh about twenty five thousand square feet mixed with about uh ninety two condo units. I think uh, we also had a, a self-storied proposal with some smaller uh footprints that was approved. All those plans we worked through with the property owners to try to figure out what uh, have some flexibility of what we can. Have that commercial piece developed out. Ultimately, we end up having full circle with the Walmart, but a neighborhood scale grocery store. With restaurant and retail pads that provide a nice neighborhood service. So ultimately, it made, made it to where it needed to be uh to serve that area.
And of course, that's what we're all hoping for, right? Just have a residential close to services. They can walk down, get something to eat and. Go to your doctor's appointment, wear the other things all within walking distance. And so uh, Rick, you've done a great job on this and. Um, you know, thank you for all your work on it over the years. I think it's a, it's a huge success and. Especially for those people living there, it's turned out, turned out to be a really great place. So, thank you. Can I, and with that, can I, can I please get a motion?
Move to approve the final plat for Summer Walk?
Second.
Been moved in second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of that motion? Please signify by saying aye. Is there anyone opposed? That motion carries. And skin. So now, uh, is anything else, Mr. City Manager? And then uh, we're gonna go on to uh Boards Commission's report. So I know we just did a lot of these this last meeting. I actually do not have a report. But um, Deputy Mayor, you have something?
Um, so I just have one. Uh, Jazzcom um, met for their second retreat. November thirtieth, which I believe is Monday at five. And um, there were three agenda items. Um, we had a demonstration of the online licensing um, that uh, was set up by Pet Point. And um. They're hoping to be able to um, go live with it. Um. Twelve weeks about, so. The end of February, um, maybe first part of March. And um. It, it looked really great from what I saw. The um, licensing discussion uh, be. Was part of our discussion of our. ILA, which we will be discussing and. Um, some of the language that there is. Um. We discussed was the fact that we had. That the Joint Animal Services Board would set fees. And then we would, the jurisdictions would adopt them. And in some ways, that's better because it can standardize it. And we don't have to go through uh having staff and everything trying to discuss that. Um. And then the other thing is um, setting up. A, a more standard fee so that some that won't have a different fee from some other jurisdiction. And. Let me see what other thing we discussed. Um. We also within the ILA, besides the licensing um, discussion, we had um. We talked about adding additional services as an option. And then also potential adding other jurisdiction, jurisdictions as an option. And let me see if I've missed anything. Um. Oh, yes, with the licensing online, um. It costs seventy five cents to administer it. Um, and so if you do it over the counter, it's X amount. Flat rate, but if you do it online, it costs an extra seventy five cents to administer. And. So it's kind of um, this disparate kind of uh, fee. So all of us thought that. The seventy five cent should be incorporated, if possible, into the licensing fee online. So that we, the Jazzcom comes out with the set, the same amount for the fee as over the counter. And I think that. Uh, let me double check is. My. Report, thanks.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Uh, next up is Councilor Cox.
Hi, I have just one report tonight. Uh, intercity transit met last night. And the highlights are, uh, we approved the twenty twenty one budget. Uh, slightly bigger than the city budget we just passed at a hundred and seventy eight point five million. We also adopted the twenty twenty one through twenty twenty six strategic plan for transit. Um. The general manager, Anne Freeman Manzanero, has reported that staff is having to delay. The service expansion that was anticipated to begin on December sixth. Uh, and this is because of the surge in COVID cases in Thurston County. Has actually reduced the number of available drivers to the point where there just aren't enough. To sustain the expended, the expanded service. Uh, staff will continue to monitor the situation and when it appears. They are able to sustain it, they want to move forward with service expansion as soon as it's safe to do so. Um, if any of you have been aboard a bus recently, you may have seen a. Uh, the, respect the ride uh. Campaign. And it's, is designed to urge riders to be courteous and kind to one another. And to keep passengers safe and comfortable in these very stressful times. It's. It's important, you know, that passengers do wear their masks and they do socially distance on the buses. Because people are in fairly close quarters and they have to. Have to sustain uh, safe practices on there. And um, lastly, we said goodbye to um, our chair, Ryan Warner. Who has served as a citizen representative for three terms. Uh, his successor as citizen representative will be Justin Belk. Who has been um, who's a Wash Dot employee. Who has served on intercity transit's community advisory committee. So. We look forward to welcoming Justin and saying goodbye. To uh, Ryan. And at least for one meeting, I will be chair. Until we do our, our regrouping in January. So.
Thank you. Um, next up is Councilmember Greenstein.
Just one quick update. Um, I attended a meeting on Monday. With uh, many of our Lewis County counterparts uh, from Centralia, Chehalis and the county. Uh, in regards to a, an ongoing feasibility study that they've been working on. Uh, regarding merging or bringing. Or coming over to TCOM for their nine one one service. They've had uh, some issues over the years with their, with their nine one one service. And they're not uh completely happy with how things are working. So they've actually been in talks and as the chair of TCOM, I represent TCOM at that meeting. So I just, just kind of wanted to give that update. They um, they, their initial feasibility study is done. It, it looks like there are possibilities and uh, we are, we are going to continue looking at it. But I, I made the, my biggest point, and I think you'll all appreciate this, is that. I'm not against the concept of regionalization or merging the two, as long as it benefits the citizens of Thurston County. You know, the, the bottom line is, it's, in my opinion, something we cannot do if it costs the citizens of Thurston County more. Or doesn't give them better level of service. So that was really uh, the gist of. What I told them that I needed to see from the feasibility study is it has to either enhance the service. Or lessen the cost of service for Thurston County residents, or there would be no point in doing it. So, just kind of wanted to give that quick update. Um, there'll be a lot more to come over, over the next probably. Year at least, but it's uh, the, the, the transition would be about a six-year process. So it's, it's, you know, a long-term project, but just wanted to give that update.
Thanks for the update. And yeah, and hopefully, you know, that's one of the things that I know we, it was discussed when we were going to this new system, that we could possibly add other people on. Other jurisdictions on and hopefully would lower our, our costs. So let's hope it all plays, works out that way. It turns out to be a good deal for everyone and everyone concerned. Um, next up is Councilman Miller.
I do not have a report uh, this week. I gave all my reports last week, but I did want to. Uh, one quick note is that the additional testing center, from what I understand, has opened and uh, has served people. Uh, yesterday, and they will be open again next week. The one of the new testing center on Pacific. And uh, city manager might want to uh, say a couple words about that.
Uh, that's correct. Councilman Miller, we do have a new testing site in Lacey at. From ten to one o'clock. My understanding about told people utilize that site uh, this Wednesday. So. I think as more information and people are aware of that, that's another resource that people can come if they believe they have COVID symptoms. And find out uh, where they can get a test.
Thank you. Appreciate that. And thank you, Councilman Miller, for uh, your looking into that and help, helping set that up. It's really appreciated for. Especially the people who live in that part of town. It's great. Uh, Councilor Stedman.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I have my video off because I'm having some uh, streaming problems. So. But a real quick report, I only reporting on Community Action Council. Um, where uh, I'm the treasurer and we just had our exit audit today. No findings as usual. So that's especially uh, welcoming, being the treasurer of, of that board. Um, other than that, um, I wanted to bring to attention the, um, to the council that there's a petition going around. Um, involving the Fred Myers with the citizens and employees signing a petition to bring back uh. Um, the contract services that the Lacey had. So. Um, we should probably see about adding that to a work session or planning commission or whatever. Um, but other than that, that is my report.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Uh, we can talk a little offline with the, with the city manager about what's going there. I'm happy to have that conversation with you too, Scott. I, I, I heard that petition's on its way over. Um. The Fred Myers not happy with state patrol uh, contract uh, to do pride services there at, at Fred Meyer and they would. They really like the Lacey P, T, Lacey Police Department to come back and. Provide their services, but we can, we all talk offline on that, Scott. Um, then last up is uh, Councilmember Kunkel.
I have no report. Thank you.
Oh, then we've reached the end of our agenda. And uh, it's a long meeting, but we had a, some, some really good. Enthusiastic uh, young members of our community, uh, passionate about climate action, you know, and so. It was always good to hear from them. Um, but other than that, we, we have reached the end of our agenda. So without objection, I'm gonna call this meeting adjourned. And as always, you keep it classy, Lacey. See ya.
Good night, everybody.